All right, we'll go ahead and call this meeting of the Isani City Council the order if we can all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. During your roll call, we have all members present. Do we have any public comment this evening?
Hearing none, I'll look for a motion to adopt the agenda. We did have a couple of changes. We're going to be removing K five, the resolution to consider declaring slum and blighted area as required by, as required to apply for small cities development funding through the Minnesota Department of Employment and Economic Development, maybe is what it's supposed to say there? Okay. And then we're going to add L seven, the resolution approving authorization to terminate the contract with USI LLC and enter into a contract with Marsh McLean, McLean and Agency LLC. And Josie, I think you want to maybe just touch on that real quick? What was the?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'll touch on both of those. The reason why we removed K five, the Small Cities Development Grant Opportunity was in further looking into this, it really was a lot more that we would have to get into it with the, for city staff time, but as well as tracking. And we didn't want to make sure that the city was on the hook for seven years plus for some fundings. We weren't able to utilize all the benefits that we were hoping. For example, the community center was not eligible because it's a polling place. So we just didn't have enough benefits to outweigh the work of that grant, that opportunity at this time. So we'll continue to look for other funding opportunities. And then for adding the contract termination and approving for the liability insurance. So we do have insurance that we use for our city facilities. And we are required through the League of Minnesota Cities Insurance Trust to have a contract with someone who does coordinate those work and also for work runs compensation. And we did have a significant rate increase with USI. Therefore, staff solicited other quotes and found a different vendor that was willing to continue the remainder of the contract through this year and move forward with the continued rates that we had previously worked with USI on. So we felt that that was a significant savings for the city to make that change.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion to adopt the agenda from Councilman Lundin and a second from Councilman Merrill. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries four zero. Uh, let's see for, uh, looks like we've got some awards here from the twenty twenty-three Isani Shisago County Reader's Choice. Best of, uh, we're a finalist for the best outdoor events for the Isani Street Dances. And we're also, uh, the finalist for, uh, the best local park for Bluebird Park. So appreciate that, guys, and thank you for that. Well, thank you for the readers, I guess, is really, really where it's at, so. Uh, so good to hear that. It's, uh, we, the street dances are really well attended and I know a lot of people are enjoying the park there too, so. Um, I'll look for a motion to approve the city council meeting minutes. Uh, we've got October sixteenth, the city council special meeting minutes. October seventeenth, we have the regular city council meeting minutes. And October seventeenth, we have the committee of the whole meeting minutes. And for October twenty-fourth, we have the special joint, uh, council meeting with Isanti County minutes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion to approve from Councilman Lundin and a second from Councilman Heeman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries four zero. For announcements, we've got the Planning Commission meeting on Tuesday, November twenty-first at five PM. We've got the Budget Work Session meeting on Tuesday, the twenty-first at six PM. Uh, city council meeting also on the twenty-first at seven PM. And the Committee of the Whole on the twenty-first immediately following the council meeting. Uh, city offices will be closed on Thursday, November twenty-third and Friday, the twenty-fourth in observance of Thanksgiving. And we have a Park and Rec Board meeting Tuesday, November twenty-eighth at six PM. Do we have any council committee reports? All right, we have a couple of, uh, public hearings here for tonight. Uh, the first one is to amend the zoning code, chapter four, four, five, section fifteen, fencing, screening and landscaping.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, before you all see ordinance amendment to amend the section fifteen of the zoning ordinance for fencing, screening and landscaping. Specifically tree location, all lots with more than eighty linear feet of road frontage shall provide a minimum of two trees in front of the primary structure. Um, and all residential properties with seventy-nine feet of frontage or less shall provide at least one tree in front of the primary structure. And that is a change from saying the majority of trees shall be planted in front of the primary structure. The Committee of the Whole, as you're aware, discussed this previously. Um, and the Planning Commission did recommend, um, approval of this to the city council at their October seventeenth meeting.
All right, so we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. If anybody would like to speak on this matter, you can come forward now. I hear no comments from the public. I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. And it looks like we've got a, an option here to adopt the changes here.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilman Lundin and a second from Councilman Merrill. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries four zero. Our second public hearing is the resolution to consider wellhead protection policy and approval of plan, uh, part two.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So as you know, groundwater is an essential source of, uh, fresh water for the public water supplier for the city of Isani. Virtually an activity on the surface of the ground which involves hazardous substances may contaminate the groundwater. Once polluted groundwater is difficult and sometimes impossible to clean. Uh, natural microorganisms which help break down some pollutants on the surface of the ground and in the topsoil layers are not present, are not present in sufficient quantities in groundwater. The slow rates of groundwater flow ranging from one foot per day to, uh, up to one foot in fifty years, depending upon soil types. Uh, limit dilution or dispersal of contaminants groundwater contaminated today, um, and by today's uses, and activities may remain contaminated for hundreds of years. So we've been working on this since last, uh, December, putting this whole thing together with, uh, lots of help. Uh, but this required by the, uh, Department of Health, well, protection programs. Um, water suppliers develop local wellhead protection programs and complete program submission includes the following key elements. Identification of roles and responsibilities, assessment of data elements. Delineation of wellhead protection areas, vulnerability assessment, identification of potential sources of contamination. Establishment of management strategies for the wellhead protection area evaluation program, water supply contingency strategy. Review and comment by the public, implementation of the well protection plan, resolution of disputes and enforcement. So as defined by the Federal Safe Drinking Water Act, the wellhead protection area is the surface and subsurface area surrounding the water well or well field supplying a public water system through which contaminants are reasonably likely to move forward and reach water well or well field. In order to develop a wellhead protection plan, each of the twelve above mentioned elements must be, uh, addressed and they were all addressed. So as part of this plan, there are grant opportunities to help pay for some of the things in the plan. Could be like sealing a well or some other things that, uh, are part of the plan. Uh, in, in summary, to make the wellhead protection a success, we'll take support from the Isani City Council and residents of Isani.
All right. Thank you, Matt. I know a lot of, a lot of work goes into this, uh, project and, uh, probably I'm sure Jason as well and, and, uh, the whole, whole team that you guys have working on this, so appreciate the work on it. Uh, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. If anybody would like to comment on this matter, you can come forward now. Hearing no public comment, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Any discussion or, uh, otherwise I'll look for a motion to approve.
Matt, I have, I have a question for you quick. How often is that generally done in most cities and in our city?
It's every ten years. Needs to be done every ten years.
Okay.
The last time was twenty fourteen.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion to approve from Councilman Lundin and a second from Councilman Merrill. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries four zero. All right, so we'll go ahead and move on to our business items. We have K one, interviewing the candidates for the temporary appointment to the vacant city council seat. And we're just basically going to jump right in. I believe we have to ask all of the candidates the exact same questions. Is that correct or?
Thank you, Mayor, for that question. Yes, that is correct. So if you have any additional questions that you want to add in addition to the list that they received, please ask that of all the candidates. So, uh, think of whatever question you would like to ask in the beginning with the first one to keep that, um, concurrent throughout the rest. If there's further clarification you need from a candidate, um, and you want to ask for more clarification on something that they shared in reference to a question, that is fine.
All right, that sounds good. So we'll go ahead and jump right in here and we've got the list in front of us. Uh, looks like we have Jeff Holmgren will be going first. And we want them to state their name and address or they've, they've already got all that information? Okay, all right. Well, thanks for, for coming in, Jeff. Uh, first question here, I'll read for you, is tell us about yourself and why you put your name in for consideration for the open council seat.
Um, I moved here to the city of Isani about twelve years ago. Um, I'm married to Amanda, my wife. Uh, I have two daughters, Abby and Adeline, sixteen and eight. Um, I also joined the Isani Fire District about twelve years ago. And I just believe that everybody should be getting involved with their local politics, so I applied.
Okay. If you were going to describe the Isani, or excuse me, if you were going to describe Isanti to a new resident, what would you say?
I would say it's a great city to raise a growing family. There's a lot of activities for kids to do in town, like joining the soccer, soccer teams and, and which we have the local soccer complex right here in the city of Isani. Uh, you can also join the local hockey teams, which again is conveniently located right here in the city of Isani. And, uh, kids have a lot of parks and, and sidewalks to go biking and playing and, uh, able to run wild and free.
All right. Uh, what is your approach to handling controversial and complicated issues?
Uh, just be, be enabled to listen to people and, and their problems and then gather all the information about that specific topic. And then just be honest with them. If you don't agree with them, you know, tell them in a polite way and then hopefully, you know, you can make the right decisions with all the information that you can collect.
Uh, what previous community involvement have you had in Isanti or another city?
Uh, like I said, um, I joined the fire department, which we do a lot of community outreach, so I get a lot of interaction with the local, local population. And I also joined or, uh, started getting involved with the Isani County Republican Party, uh, for the last about year and a half, two years.
All right. Uh, what skills and experience do you have that you believe are beneficial to being a council member?
Uh, I believe I'm a patient person, uh, and able to listen and then I like to talk to people. And again, like with being on the fire department, I get a lot of interaction and I think one of the better events to talk to people and, uh, get information is the, uh, county fair. So that's one of my favorite events.
All right. And, uh, explain what you believe are the primary roles and responsibilities of a city council member.
Uh, some of the duties would be to review and approve annual budgets, establish long-term and short-term objectives and priorities uh, for the city and set city code and ordinance, city code ordinances and, uh, communicate the policies and programs correctly to the residents.
Okay. And what do you believe are the top priorities or the greatest issues facing the city? And how do you see yourself contributing to finding solutions to those issues?
Uh, I think one of the bigger things the city is, uh, facing would be a slowing economy, which, you know, when you have high interest rates, you know, home values come down. And so that affects your budget. So hopefully you can keep that in line and then, uh, really making sure you have the right priorities. You know, your infrastructure is a big priority. And right now, you know, we got the roundabouts and lights discussions going on. So I think just focusing on what government is supposed to be providing.
Okay. If you could change some aspect about Isanti governance or direction or focus, what would that be?
I would actually like to see more sit-down restaurants. Wintergreen gets really packed and it'd be nice to have another option instead of going to Cambridge or out to one of the townships. But again, like, we should be focusing on infrastructure and another, uh, area of traffic concern would be, County Road Five and the Farmers Co-op, uh, that area on a Friday or Saturday. And in the summertime, it, it gets pretty congested. So if we can get some of our traffic issues resolved before it's a major traffic concern, that would be a big plus.
Okay. Uh, city council requires a time commitment which includes four to six meetings per month. Uh, two Tuesdays per month beginning at five PM on one of them and seven PM on the other, as well as reading prep prior to the meetings. Will this fit with your other commitments?
Should be, yes.
Is there anything else you would like to add to assist us in considering you as a candidate?
Uh, no, not at this time. Is there any questions you guys would like to ask?
Yes, but first I have a question for Josie. Um, if we have two firemen on the board, is there anything you can think of in the past where the mayor had to abstain from a vote, uh, regarding the fire department?
The times I can think of that they would need to, I, I guess I couldn't specifically list an item that they've had to abstain or, um, would be if there was some, an item to come up that re, was around, uh, financial budget related, uh, maybe contribution that the city makes towards using the fire district. Um, or if there was any changes or amendments to the way that the fees for all entities within the fire district are calculated. That perhaps would be something that a fire district member would need to abstain from. Otherwise, if there was any, um, conflict of interest, it would have to depend on what the topic would be.
And I can answer that from, from my own personal experience. I think that it's the one time I think I'd maybe abstained, and I'm pretty sure I did, was when we sold the, the building to the fire department, the police department building. And that, I think that's the only time in five years I've had to abstain. Pretty sure. But don't, don't hold me to that a hundred percent. If you go back and look at, but I, I mean, it's, I think that's the one time that I did, so.
I have a question about business. Um, what? What makes a business want to locate to Isani?
I would, I would say, um, like, location, um, good business friendly policies and, uh, I would say lower taxes and then, you know, uh, always being, encourage them. As a govern, as a government, I would want to be in touch with the local businesses on a regular basis to, you know, keep up with, you know, issues that they may see instead of them having to come in, maybe do a little more outreach and. But then low taxes and good business friendly policies would be my answer.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. Uh, up next, we have Taylor Lundin. Thanks for coming in, Taylor.
Thank you.
Uh, well, we'll get right here, uh, right into it. Tell us about yourself and why you put your name in for consideration for the open council seat.
I'm a mom of two little girls, so they will be starting school shortly. So I am wanting to learn more and grow with our community with the other events that we have in Isani.
Okay. Uh, if you were going to describe Isanti to a new resident, what would you say?
Um, it's definitely a smaller town, but it has up and coming opportunities within different things that Isani offers. So for instance, like the BMX thing is a big thing around here and it has become bigger and bigger, it seems like. So that would be another one to say.
Okay. Uh, what is your approach to handling controversial and complicated issues?
Um, I would say listening to both sides and just getting everyone's point of view to see where we can find a middle resolution or solve some kind of issue, just to kind of get a mutual agreement between it.
Uh, what previous community involvement have you had in Isanti or another city?
Um, I always attend the community events. I have donated food for like local residents around Isani. Um, a couple of times I've been in softball tournaments in a different city. And then I'm always en, engaged with the parades and I walk for some kind of company or something, just to get myself involved with it.
Okay. Uh, what skills and experience do you have that you believe are beneficial to being a council member?
Um, I am the younger generation, so I would say I have a different perspective than what maybe the older generation has, so just bringing in some new ideas.
Okay. Explain what you believe are the primary roles and responsibilities of a city council member.
I would say definitely growing the community into a safe environment for others to join us. And then just making Isani a bigger town for everyone to be welcomed in.
Okay. And what do you believe are the top priorities or greatest issues facing the city? And how do you see yourself contributing to the finding solutions to those issues?
Um, like the one was talked about is just like the traffic control, just making it more smoothly so that we can prevent accidents happening and just a safer community. And then I would also say like any of the empty or vacant buildings around town, just kind of filling them up and making new opportunities for them.
Okay. Uh, if you could change some aspect about Isanti governance or direction or focus, what would that be?
Just continuing to grow and just learning from different perspectives of different community members and the public to see on what they're wanting from the community.
Uh, the city council requires a time commitment which includes four to six meetings per month. Uh, two Tuesdays per month, uh, one Tuesday we start at five o'clock and one we start at seven, uh, as well as reading prep, prep time prior to meetings. Will this fit with your other commitments?
Yes.
And is there anything else you would like to add to assist us in considering you as a candidate?
Yes, I'm actually in the process of starting a child home daycare, just because I find that there needs to be a demand in the city for them. So I have opened up my arms and in the process of licensing, so I can provide care for kids.
Any questions, guys?
Um, Mayor, if we would just ask the same question that we asked the first candidate and then that would be, unless there's more clarification needed.
Yeah, okay.
And then I have another question of you, Josie. So Jeff had mentioned he lived here for twelve years. Um, I was hoping that every candidate would say how long they've lived here. Is that a question that I can ask since Jeff has already answered that? From here on out? Is that?
I think. I think it's a clarification question. My, I think if you said you lived in the city, I would think it'd be a clarification of how many years.
So I'll ask that from, of everybody then?
Yes.
Okay. Sure, you can ask your question first.
Should have wrote down the exact wording I used, but.
I did write it down. Councilmember Heeman, if you want me to read the question?
Sure, I'm pretty sure I know it, but go ahead.
Okay. What makes a business want to locate in Isanti?
So if you look on like the community page, you can always see what everyone's wanting and always requesting for. So if you see the most common things in there, it might be a good spot to locate a business here.
And then my question, how long have you lived in Isani?
I have been here for a little over two years.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. Any other questions?
I think so. Thank you, Taylor.
Thank you.
All right, next we have Travis Linder. Thanks for coming in, Travis.
Uh, good evening.
How you doing?
Pretty good, yourself?
I guess I can't ask you that, can I?
I, I talk to you every day or every time I'm here, anyway.
Uh, tell us about yourself and why you put your name in for consideration for the open council seat.
So, um, I've moved, uh, let me restart this already, cause yeah. Um, I grew up here as a kid on the southern side of Isani and the unincorporated side closer to St. Francis and always kind of had that knack of wanting to come back and doing something here and making my family and making my life here in the city. So I had that opportunity in June of twenty-one when I moved back here. And ever since then, I've always kind of wanted to be more than just a regular citizen. I want to be able to help out and kind of do a little bit more than just the average, I guess.
Okay. Uh, if you were going to describe Isanti to a new resident, what would you say?
I'd say it's classic. It's got a hometown feel with it, with, uh, a lot of possibilities that we've got coming up and, and moving from being essentially a bedroom community into more of a destination. And that's something I really value up here.
Okay. Uh, what is your approach to handling controversial and complicated issues?
Kind of following the trend with this question so far, but I'd rather listen to both sides and get as many views as possible just to be able to make a more well-rounded and a, um, less biased opinion, as it were. Then that way I can at least attempt to say that I've taken in everything I can and know everything I can, because I like to research as much as possible.
Okay. And what previous community involvement have you had in Isanti or in another city?
It's kind of been light, I'll be honest with you. Um, earlier this year, we were helping change the city ordinance for the commercial vehicles. Trying to get the school bus issue that we had earlier. Um, I came in for a couple of other pieces. I've been trying to attend every meeting here I can. I don't do a ton in this city, but I try and be out as much as I can because again, I live here and I pretty much stay in the city all, every day, so.
Okay. And what skills and experience do you have that you believe are beneficial to being a good, a, a council member?
I think having some sort of business management really would help out a lot. Me personally, I've got over twenty years of public facing retail, whether it be through food or through traditional retail target, what have you. I think it's, it's a big thing to allow, just due to the fact that I, I believe that our bud, or budgeting in city is kind of like a business in some ways. And I, I think that should stand a little bit more for what skills that we should really have to be able to have this role.
Okay. Uh, explain what you believe are the primary roles and responsibilities of a city council member.
So I think the big thing is to navigate or guide the city in the direction that the citizens want, that the community is asking for. That's why we're elected into that role. Um, I also think having a decent budget would be one of our primary roles as well, because if our budget isn't what we want it to be, who's going to want to live here? I also believe that we should always be accessible as council people, as councilmen.
What do you believe are the top priorities or greatest issues facing the city? And how do you see yourself contributing to finding solutions to those issues?
Well, the big thing from here right now is just more, I guess, commercial growth on heritage and growing the business side of things. And, and finding more opportunities for people to be able to have more of a reason to come up here and stay up here, not just kind of drive through and go, oh, look, it's Isani. And as well as honestly improving the safety around the schools on the roads, because some of these crosswalks really scare me, not gonna lie. And that's one thing I've always been, kind of been about is we got to figure out something better than what we've got.
All right. If you could change some aspect about Isani governance or direction or focus, what would that be?
I think the direction that we have now is fair is what we have. I do believe that we should focus more on making Isani just more of a destination town instead of a bedroom community. Other than that, I think we're good.
Uh, city council requires a time commitment which includes four to six meetings per month. It's two Tuesdays per month, uh, one we start at five o'clock, one we start at seven, uh, as well as reading prep prior to meetings. Uh, will this fit with your other commitments?
Yes.
And is there anything else you would like to add to assist us in considering you as a candidate?
Well, no, I'd just like. Well, I'd just like to say that I think Isanty has a wonderful small town feel to it. And I think if we take the right steps together, we can see our town grow in ways that everybody would want to make this town their home. Not just us, but everybody around us.
Okay.
What makes a business want to locate to Isanty?
Untapped potential. Easiest way I can put it. We have a lot of stuff up here that we can do. As Jeff was saying, we could have more sit-down restaurants. There's opportunities for that around in the city. There's plenty of growth available for us, for any business.
All right, thanks.
And then you sort of answered my question. You said you'd move back in 2021, so that's approximately two years.
Yeah, about two, two and a half.
And then how long did you live on the outskirts of Isanty for?
About three and a half, four years.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you Travis. Next we have Jason Gierman. Thanks for coming in Jason.
Yeah.
Tell us about yourself and why you put your name in for consideration for the open council seat.
Well, I own and operate a company or a business here in town. I just, just as far as like trying to get involved with the community a little bit more and understanding.
Okay. If you were going to describe Isanty to a new resident, what would you say?
Small town feel, just basically it's a quiet neighborhood, quiet town, you know, place you can run, you know, snowmobiles, ATVs, place for kids. It's kind of an all-around small town where you can kind of come in and just feel, feel at home.
All right. What is your approach to handling controversial and complicated issues?
Big, big thing for me is listening to what's going on, not take any sides right away, understand. Don't make any bias, just basically listen and understand before you do anything and then go from there.
And what previous community involvement have you had in Isanty or another city?
Well, obviously I run a business here in town, so I speak with a lot of residents, non-residents. That's a big part of it. I've given, every Thanksgiving I give, give or take $300, $400 to the school. And then the school distributes to whoever they feels take, that's in need for it. Do the same thing for Christmas, like 600 bucks. I give donors to the city here. Actually give some, gave donors to the council, to the city hall. I give donors to the police department. I give donors to the county. It's kind of a, you know, and then my wife makes a thank you card. And obviously I run the business out of that too. We give the business cards so they know my phone number, email, if they ever need anything, whatever to. And also I do the drive-through, drive-through difference. Basically I go through, go through McDonald's in the morning and I pay for the person behind me. Type of that, basically I'm that type of person.
Okay. What skills and experience do you have that you believe are beneficial to being a council member?
Well, running the business is, it's just not working. It's, it's budgeting, it's. I'm, I'm a one-man show. My, my, my is my wife does all the computer work for me. So basically it's, I've got, with that, with that skill alone, I have to make sure everything's running right. You know, it's not just eight hours a day, it's 25 hours a day. Same thing running a city, running a household, you got to make sure your, your budgets are there, people are there. Everybody's as happy as you can make them.
Okay. And explain what you believe are the primary roles and responsibilities of a city council member?
Representing the community mostly, but there's also, you got to keep in, you got to do the city involved. So you got to, as far as the budget, same thing with the budgets, you got to make sure the budgets are there, but you got to listen to the community and then make sure what, what they're saying is being heard, good or bad.
What do you believe are the top priorities or the greatest issues facing the city? And how do you see yourself contributing to finding solutions to those issues?
Well, everybody's kind of, kind of went through the safety thing. I'm going to go through, you've heard of that before. I'm going to go, I lived here, your question, five years, over five and a half years. It took us almost three years to realize what the city actually had. We didn't know we had, you know, a garden on the other side of whiskey. We didn't know we had, you know, just different amenities. You know, we don't get out too much, but in the same sense I get out. Just more opportunity, more communication on that part. I didn't know I had a, we had a archery range. I shoot archery. I had no idea. So it's one of those things that I didn't, didn't know about. So just basically getting to, getting our amenities out. And that would, that would attract more people into the city by knowing, knowing what we have.
Okay. If you could change some aspect about Isanty governance or direction or focus, what would that be?
Do the same thing on the, on the last question. Just basically knowing, getting people to understand what we have. And to help, help them want to come here. And, you know, then the other one would be just be able to have more. You, you build, we're building all these office buildings right now. I'd rather get in, get some shops involved, some, I'm going to grab a detail shop. That's what I do. So just get, get stuff like that more in here, so.
Okay. City council requires a time commitment, which includes four to six meetings per month. Two Tuesdays per month, one would begin at 5:00 PM and one we start at 7:00 PM. As well as reading and prep time prior to the meetings. Will this fit with your other commitments?
Yes, it will.
Okay. And is there anything else you would like to add to assist us in considering you as a candidate?
I think I've answered most of your questions.
What makes a business want to locate to Isanty?
There's room for, room for growth. You know, we don't have some of the, some stuff that other bigger, bigger cities do. And there's opportunity to get that in, into the city.
And you answered my question, so thank you.
Yeah?
You answered my question, so thank you for that.
Yep, no problem.
Thank you Jason. All right, this one, next person is Ricky. Is it edgy or? Am I saying that right Ricky? Edgy, okay, all right. Well, thanks for coming in Ricky.
Thank you.
All right, well, go ahead and jump right in here. Tell us about yourself and why you put your name in for consideration for the open council seat.
I put, so been living in Isanty in the area, grew up raised out by Fish Lake, out by Harris. I've been a, living in this area for most of my life minus a few years. Moved back up here four years ago. And I've always had an interest in government and believed that part of being a citizen is being active in that government, staying aware of what's going on, things like this and businesses. And trying to advocate for the, what, what you believe is appropriate for what you want your community to look like. So that includes things like voting. And I thought, you know, being a council member would be a good first step into being even more active and influential in where that government is going.
Okay. If you were going to describe Isanty to a new resident, what would you say?
I would say Isanty is a small town that is close enough to the other large areas that it is, I think, beneficial for raising a family because you have access to things like hunting and fishing and the small town feel. While also being close enough to the other amenities like healthcare, shopping, et cetera, that it's not far enough away that you feel like you're kind of out in the sticks. I would say that wasn't the case 20 years ago when we were, when, I should say, when we, when I was a kid. So I'm 45, but 20 years ago, it really was more of a small town, right? Where you were far enough away, where there really wasn't access to things without driving an hour. And now I think you still get a lot of that small town feel. How long that's going to last, I don't know, but really you still do have that. Where you can still know a lot of your neighbors and a lot of the families and the businesses and stuff like that and make friends and understand what they're doing and why they're trying to start here in Isanty or why they want to stay here. And I think that's beneficial because, you know, you go to Blaine, there's 30,000 people, 40,000 people, right? You might know a small subset of them, but you're not going to interact with them on a regular basis. And I think you still have the capability and the opportunity to do that here in the town like Isanty.
Okay. And what is your approach to handling controversial and complicated issues?
This is so, little background on me, I am a director of, for the Americas for a software company. So I have a lot of dealing with conflict and sales and controversial situations and things like this. The biggest thing for me when dealing with those situations is actually understanding what, where both sides are coming from. So you want to figure out, what are the goals here? You know, what are you trying to do? What are you trying to do? And what, what's the overarching direction that we're trying to go as a city? So you have to, sometimes not everybody's going to get what they want, right? The idea of government though is to compromise. You need to understand what's the best way to achieve that direction. Try to make the most amount of people happy, right? While you're not trampling on the rights of, one of the biggest tenants of government is to not trample on the rights of the minority citizens, right? So those that aren't in charge are those that aren't part of the larger majority. So you have to kind of take into account, what are the goals? What are they trying to do? And then at the end of the day, make the best decision or what you believe is the best decision. And I think part of like being in a council, the beneficial way for that is you actually have enough votes that you can have a discussion here, both sides of the argument. And sometimes it's not going to be, you know, four to one, four to, you know, five to one. Sometimes it's going to be five oh, sometimes it's going to be oh and five, right? You have to understand that there's going to be those negotiations. And you have to work to kind of come together and find common ground to be able to move forward.
Okay. What previous community involvement have you had in Isanty or another city?
I would say this is, besides like volunteering or helping out with like nonprofits, things like that. This would be my first foray into actual city government and helping to guide and set the direction for where a city is going.
Okay. What skills and experience do you have that you believe are beneficial to being a council member?
I would say one of the biggest skills actually comes from my day job. So because I work in a sales organization that deals with cultures and people from everywhere in the world, that the ability to start with respect and understanding is probably the most valuable skill that I have. Being able to disarm somebody and actually get to the root of what they're after and what their goals are, is probably the, the greatest skill. I have the uncanny ability to get people to share with me everything, even if I don't ask for it. Which is, it's a blessing and a curse, but I feel when you're in government, that ability to get to that root of what somebody really wants and what they're, what they're looking for is, that's kind of the crux of government is to understand that, so.
Okay. Explain what you believe are the primary roles and responsibilities of a city council member?
I would say the first primary role and responsibility is to represent the citizens that you're working for. At the end of the day, it, I look at it as service, right? We are serving the city of Isanty. So that role number one is, is that understanding and serving the community. Role number two is understanding what that community is looking for and then to help make the right decisions to guide it in that direction, right? And to make those, make those tough decisions, be, be part of that conversation, provide research and feedback into what they're asking for and to provide what I would say are valuable options or solutions to the problems that the community is facing. And also ideas for growth that we may not have thought about, right? Bringing, bringing a larger group together means we should be bringing more ideas together. And I think that's one of the biggest functions of what we're doing here. And that's one of the roles to, you know, meet with the businesses, meet with the citizens and to understand what each of those is looking for and trying to balance that as we move forward.
Okay. And what do you believe are the top priorities or greatest issues facing the city? And how do you see yourself contributing to finding solutions to those issues?
I would say right now, just driving down Main Street every day, and I know you guys are actually voting on this and have had a lot of discussions around five and figuring out the traffic and the flow there. I would say it's an accident waiting to happen, but it's an accident that's happened a few times already. So I, I look at that as one. The other thing that I look at is the growth of jobs. We see a lot of growth in Cambridge with different businesses, things like this, but it's a lot of chain restaurants. I think one of the things that sets us apart is that Isanty has a lot of individual businesses that are owned by people in the community. And I think one of the biggest things that we should be doing is fostering the growth of those businesses. So I look at like BP Metals expanding. Blake has done a good job of taking the, his business and moving it to this area and now growing it. And having somebody that lives in the community is hiring in the community and growing the community. I think fostering those businesses, not bringing another Chipotle in, there's, those are going to come, right? But bringing in the businesses and the ownership and that involvement in the community, I think is one of the biggest directions we should have, right? Making sure there's incentives in place so that we can have things like the boutiques, have things like manufacturing, right? Where we're generating jobs for individuals that are here, that they would have the skills to do, qualify for, et cetera. And then I think as we grow long-term, I look at what is there for the youth in the community. So we've talked about the splash pad, things like this. And how do we take and make sure that there are things to do for the families that keep attracting people to Isanty, right? Keep that, try to keep that balanced, that small town feel, but also expand on the services and the resources that are available for those, for the families in the community.
Okay. If you could change some aspects about Isanty governance or direction or focus, what would that be?
Well, this is going to be a larger Isanty thing, but I think one of the probably troubling things that we have in this area is education funding. Now, the city of Isanty isn't directly responsible for that. But I look at that as a larger community problem where we don't have one of the better school districts in the state. And that's one challenge for us to recruit families and businesses in. They want those type of people. But it also is something that all of us in the room have to deal with. We all have families or friends or businesses here that we frequent and I think that's one of the areas that we suffer. There is definitely a big crunch on money, not just for the businesses and things like this, but the inflation has hit every one of the families. So what, I mean, one of the, one of the biggest things is keeping budget flat, right? Trying to make sure that we're not a bigger burden on the families that live here and want to move here than, than what we currently are as a government.
Okay. City council requires a time commitment, which includes four to six meetings per month. It's two Tuesdays per month. We have one meeting where we start at five, one where we start at seven. One day, I should say, not just a meeting, but a day full of meetings, as well as reading prep time prior to meetings. Will this fit with your other commitments?
Yes, it will.
Okay. And is there anything else you would like to add to assist us in considering you as a candidate?
No, I just look forward to seeing where you go and what's, what happens, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hold on, we've got a couple, a couple more questions for you.
What makes a business want to locate to Isanty?
I would say the, the biggest thing when you're looking at businesses relocating, they're looking at two things. One, how reasonable is it for me to operate here from a financial perspective? So I'm looking at my taxes, my availability to resources, things like water, sanitation, transportation, things like this. And number two is staffing. Am I going to have people that are available? Are those people going to be reliable? Are they going to be able to make it into work every day? And I think Isanty has a community with people, especially if you're looking at like manufacturing. We have a large blue collar contingent in our community. And being able to have those jobs, being able to move a manufacturing types thing up here is, is beneficial. The other portion that I look at right now is service industry, right? We have a, and I don't, I don't mean restaurants from that perspective. We could definitely use probably more options than Winter Greens and the VFW and now we've got Dairy Queen, right? There's probably more opportunity for some service type. I would say businesses in this area for places to eat or places for like evening entertainment, things like this. So I think it's a area that's ripe for that kind of growth. But the other thing is definitely the blue collar growth and having this, having the staff and the people with the work ethic and the skillset to be able to jump in and to help those businesses run, so.
All right, thank you.
And I believe you, I believe you said you lived here four years now?
Yeah, I, I, I lived out by Long Lake for 10 years. I grew up there. So I lived in Blaine for a year when I got divorced.
Okay.
So. And I moved right back.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you Ricky. Next we have Benjamin De Mars. Next, we have Benjamin Demaris. Benjamin, thanks for coming in.
Yes.
Tell us about yourself and why you put your name in for consideration for the open council seat.
Saw the open council seat as an opportunity to get involved. Have been involved in various levels of student government organizations in the past. And leveraging that experience, wanted to put that forth into something that is more in the community. New to the community myself, we've only lived here just over a year. But my wife has been working up here for the better part of a decade. And so we've been involved in the community in one way or another very good portion of that time. I do want to be helpful to the community we live in. We are raising our family here. My wife and I have two kids, one is four and one is four months. And so we are wanting to make sure that what they have available to them now kind of stays that way. We love what we have here and really want to make sure we can maintain it well.
Okay. If you were going to describe Isanty to a new resident, what would you say?
I think the best term that I could come up with is a hallmark charm. Not just the fact that we had a movie filmed at Erickson Farm a few years ago, but we still maintain a very nice little Main Street. We have town events. We have different things for different families. We've got everything from kids' events to adult events, but it's, it's all catered to our entire demographic. We have a, a small-town feel, we have good neighbors. And I think at this point, we can pretty safely say we're growing up and growing out. There's a lot of expansion going on, which provides a lot of opportunities for us.
Okay. And what is your approach to handling controversial and complicated issues?
Head-on. You got to be upfront about it. You got to address that it is a confrontational issue and just say, we're, we're going to deal with this. We're going to take it one step at a time. We're going to get all the facts. Everyone's going to get the facts, but we got to be upfront about it and just not be afraid to, to deal with it as a confrontational issue. I work in a law firm during my day job and there is no shortage of confrontations with attorneys.
Okay. What previous community involvement have you had in Isanty or in another city?
In the past, I've participated by volunteering in community-held events, volunteering for youth activities, participating in parades. More locally, I am a sport official for baseball and for softball. I've been an umpire for, gosh, better part of twenty years now. And have been involved in that way of facilitating the opportunity for kids to have those sorts of games. Would really love to see those continue up here. It's interesting to see the ebb and flow of a, of a city based on its athletics. And in this case, the fall was pretty sparse for baseball and softball and fall ball. It's not a telling sign, but it's just an interesting barometer to use to make sure that we understand where our city is sitting.
Okay. What skills and experience do you have that you believe are beneficial to being a council member?
I would say the past student government experience while I was in college is small, is handy. Was very into Robert's Rules of Order, understood the complexities of working on a team, was in multiple different couns, councils at that time. Having had a history major, I'm very skilled in research, being able to study, learn, and, and being in tech as I am, I'm the IT administrator for our firm. It's being able to adapt to change because change will come.
Okay. Explain what you believe are the primary roles and responsibilities of a city council member.
It's being a fair and reliable representative for our entire city. There are a lot of different options available to us as city council members. Budgets, not the least of these, are very challenging. Everyone wants to be in the black and that's hard. I think we have the opportunities here in Isanty to get, go that direction. I don't, I don't see why not. City council members have the opportunity to set the objectives for safe and fair use of our city by all the members of our community. They codify our rules and laws and help everyone to have that fair and equal opportunity for, for use of our community.
Okay. What do you believe are the top priorities or greatest issues facing the city? And how do you see yourself contributing to finding solutions to those issues?
I would say some of the issues that we continue to face are, are taxes. How do we acquire them and how do we spend them? Those are two different issues that do go hand in hand. Do we have enough coming in to support the services that the city offers? Are there offers that we need to rescind for a time until we can properly fund them? Also, a need to address the infrastructure versus business. Which one comes first? Does the infrastructure drive in the business or do businesses bolster the infrastructure? Those are some things that need to be sorted out before we can really move forward with great steam.
All right. If you could change some aspect about Isanty governance or direction or focus, what would that be?
It'd be making sure that we understand why we're making the decisions that we are making, being a hundred percent certain that we know that what we're deciding on here is going to be right. It's not just making change for the sake of change happening.
Okay. City council requires a time commitment which includes four to six meetings per month. It's two Tuesdays per month. One Tuesday, we start our meetings at five, one we start at seven, as well as a lot of reading and prep prior to meetings. Will this fit with your other commitments?
Yes.
Okay. And is there anything else you would like to add to assist us in considering you as a candidate?
Yes, I'd like to say that I'm also a local small business owner, having my own tech company here in Isanty. I currently work with a few different operations here. Isanty County Historical Society is one of them. Being able to be involved with that com, organization, I should say, is been opening to me to be able to see how our community really, where we've come from and where we're going. I think that's something that we'll address in the next question specifically, but I'd say that in my current role as an IT administrator, planning budgets, working with high-profile clients, dealing with confrontational issues, nothing I'm unaverted.
Okay. And then we've got a couple of other, other questions for you, or one more, I guess?
What makes a business want to locate to Isanty?
It'd be the opportunities that are available to us. There's a couple different, different directions it can go. We see the opportunity for large businesses to come in, manufacturing, any kind of anything like that. We've got lots of land. I know that people have talked about thirty-five E becoming the new tech corridor in Minnesota, but I think sixty-five has more potential for that down the road. At the same time, we have such a wonderful opportunity for cottage industries. All the small businesses that we have that are just run out of people's houses, homes and, and just little small businesses are, really helps support the community. I've seen in times past that, you know, a giant factory comes to town, hires everybody. It's great until they leave and then what does the city do? So as far as drawing us here, we've got a, a very healthy mix of big and small.
And you had said you'd lived in Isanty for one year approximately. Can you elaborate on where you were before or where you may have moved from?
Yeah, from Forest Lake prior.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
All right, thank you, Benjamin. Next, we have Brandon Lizhaft. All right. How did you say it?
Lizhaft.
Lizhaft.
Everybody gets it wrong.
Well, I wasn't sure. I took a shot. Well, thanks for coming in, Brandon.
No, thank you.
Tell us about yourself and why you put your name in for consideration for the open council seat.
Yeah, so I was raised in Isanty my entire life. I moved away for college, I went to Mankato, got my degree in automotive engineering. Currently, I work as a sales engineer for a company called Shuffler Group. So they're a bearing manufacturer in automotive, where I manage like the recreational vehicle manufacturers in the United States. So why I put my name in for council members? Me and my wife, who are high school sweethearts, my wife's from Cambridge, moved back here to raise our two kids. I have a six-month-old and a two-year-old. I moved back because I realized I was different, I had a different upbringing when I was in college. Not many kids ride their bikes anymore or has the opportunity to just go free, be latchkey kids, you know? In Isanty, we did that, that opportunity. And I want my kids to have that same opportunity. I want them to be, I wanted them freedom to make mistakes, you know, to, you know, be on their own, you know, ride their bike. And it's just not available other places. I want, you know, I want Isanty to grow, but I want it to grow correctly. You know, I feel like as the expansive growth Isanty has gone through, how do we maintain the small-town feel? Why, how do we maintain what brings people here? I feel like people moved by Isanty to escape the suburbs. You know, it's close enough to the cities where you can still work your job and, you know, in the northern suburbs or Minneapolis, but people move here to escape it. So how do we maintain, you know, how do we maintain those values? You know, I also, it's important things, don't forget the past. I write, you know, I was born here, I was raised here. You know, as we grow, I think we need to remember where we came from, you know, the values we've held through as a community, you know, from the beginning.
Okay. If you were going to describe Isanty to a new resident, what would you say?
So I always excited, Isanty is like the first town north of Minneapolis that's not a suburb. Where it still has the small-town feel, but you're close enough to the city. So, like I said, people up here don't play keeping up with the Joneses. I lived in Maple Grove and everyone is just trying to get over the next person. People up here don't do that, you know, we care about our neighbors, we take care of our neighbors. You know, it's, we care about each other, you know? It's not a competition and, you know, that's what I really appreciate. And I think that's what, you know, I think it's misunderstood. Isanty's been misunderstood to like the global, or the suburbs. But I think, you know, the people here realize that, you know, and care for each other.
Okay. What is your approach to handling controversial and complicated issues?
Yes, like I said, in my job, I'm a sales engineer. I deal with massive deals all the time. The issue of controversy is there's always emotion involved. And the problem is stepping away and taking the emotion out of it, writing down the facts of a situation. Once you actually determine the facts and, you know, why it is what it is, you can come back together. But the problem is, you have to take the emotion out. But the most important thing is actually, after you've solved that controversy, is going back and figuring why it happened in the first place. Too many people don't go back and look at and the same problems happen over and over and over again. So you always need to go back and realize why that happened and how you can make sure it doesn't happen in the future.
All right. What previous community involvement have you had in Isanty or in another city?
Yes, so I haven't had much involvement in Isanty since I moved back. Currently, I still sit as the Industrial Advisory Board at my college. We're like people from industries advise CSAT to the College of Engineering from Mankato. While in Isanty, I wrestled my entire time here, played baseball, football. You know, I, I went to faith Lutheran church my entire life, so. But recently, and that's really why, you know, going for council members, I want to get more involved. I think politics is important. I think people my age like to ignore it. I think they like to say, it's the baby who has problems, you know? They're, they're going to solve all our problems, but in reality, it has to be handed over eventually. And I think, you know, that's what's the right time to get involved.
Explain what you believe are the primary roles and responsibilities of a city council member.
So worrying about your neighbor's dollar, I think, is the most important thing. I'm a frugal person, you know, and I think most people here are frugal. That's why they move here. You know, not taking for granted that someone's tax dollars is going towards something. Also, like I said, maintaining the values, like I said earlier, maintaining that, why people moved here in the first place, you know? And as new people move in here, show them, you know, show them what the community is, you know, and show them our values. Also, safety is really important, as I said, I have two small children. I think focusing on safety is huge. The world is a scary place these days and I don't think Isanty, I think Isanty can, you know, protect ourselves from that. And then also just allow for opportunity. I think, you know, regulation, decrease regulations, ta, make taxes lower, allow businesses. As the population grows, you know, we have this huge workforce, but a lot of the dollars from the people who moved here ain't staying in the community. So, you know, allowing that opportunity, allowing businesses in.
Okay. And what do you believe are the top priorities or greatest issues facing the city? And how do you see yourself contributing to finding solutions to those issues?
So like I said, like, we've gone through some major growth, especially the last about five years. Huge population boom, from what I remember. Like I said, I've kind of gone through this past, but as we grow, I think we need to remember the past. We need to focus on, like I said, what, what people brought here or why people came here in the first place. And then, yeah, that's about it.
Okay. If you could change some aspect about Isanty governance or direction or focus, what would that be?
So, I don't know if I'd necessarily change anything, but I'd focus on, like I said, keeping a tight-knit community. Too many places in the world don't know their neighbors, they don't, you know, they're not involved, et cetera. I think creating a tight-knit community allows opportunity for everybody. People know, you know, people want to be involved, people want to go to events, people feel safe at events. If you don't know your neighbors, I think people are scared to get out and go to a lot of things. So I think just focus on keeping the community together as much as we can.
Okay. City council requires a time commitment which includes four to six meetings per month on two days a month. We have one Tuesday, we start at five PM, one we start at seven, as well as a lot of reading and prep time prior to meetings. Will this fit with your other commitments?
Yep.
Okay. And is there anything else you would like to add to assist us in considering you as a candidate?
I don't think so.
What makes a business want to locate to Isanty?
So, right now, like I said, I work for a manufacturing company. The biggest problem I hear out there is workforce, labor shortage. So I think, like I said, as the population grows, we have that opportunity to bring in a lot of manufacturing jobs. Do that, I think, regulations, you know, you need to make them, they need to be there. I mean, they're unnecessary evil, in my opinion. But make it, help businesses through the process, you know, hold their hand. I think a lot of people are scared to start businesses because they don't want to take that first step. But as a community, I think we need to help these businesses take that first step, help them through the process. Like, let's get them over the finish line because it only benefits us in the end.
Yep, and you, you kind of answered the question and I've known you for years, so.
Yeah, so, yeah, I moved back four years ago now, so. But yeah, I've lived here my whole life prior to that, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brandon. Next, we have Daniel Henning Camp. Thanks for coming in, Daniel.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Tell us about yourself and why you put your name in for consideration for the open council seat.
I moved, my wife and I moved to Isanty in 2020. We actually, it was three years ago this week that we bought our house. My dad always said it was important to be a service community. You can't complain about the way things are going if you're not doing your part.
Okay. If you were going to describe Isanty to a new resident, what would you say?
It's comfortable, it's, it has that small-town feel, has a bright future, it's family-oriented, plenty of opportunities for growth, it's accessible. It has all of the amenities close by of a bigger city without the BS of a bigger city, so, yeah, friendly.
All right. And what is your approach to handling controversial and complicated issues?
Yeah, social media smear campaigns, no, I'm kidding, no. No, I, I, like everybody else said, gain as much perspective as possible, ask the questions, keep the end goal in mind. I think it's important to remember that even if your opinion differs from the majority, you have to represent the majority. Even if the people that you know supported you to get up here, if your opinion, if that opinion of the, if their opinion is not that of the majority, you have to represent that. So I think it's important to represent all voices, but ultimately, you know, you have to, sometimes your opinions have to go to the side. Also, I think it's important with conflict resolution to question and challenge your fellow council members. You got to do it with respect and good intention because you may disagree on this agenda item, but you guys might be on the same team on the next agenda item. And it's a long term for everybody and there's going to be issues coming down the pike and you don't know how you're going to feel about it, so do it with respect and good intention.
All right. What previous community involvement have you had in Isanty or another city?
Yeah, I'm, I'm currently a member of the Isanty Parks and Recreation Board, also a member of the Economic Development Authority. Hopefully, we'll have a meeting someday. I am from Duluth and up there, I started a nonprofit festival called Far West Fest. I ran that for eight years before I moved down this way. I was also the youngest member of our neighborhood community, or the youngest president of our neighborhood community club. I was elected president at twenty-two. I was a founding member of the Gary and Duluth Development Alliance, a group that was formed to rehab a, a parks facility that had been abandoned by the city of Duluth. And now they put four-point-five million dollars into that. And also the St. Louis River Alliance, I was a founding member of that. We kind of were a watchdog organization for commercial growth along the St. Louis River corridor. Yeah, those are probably the big ones.
Okay. What skills and experience do you have that you believe are beneficial to being a council member?
Yeah, I like this one. So every day, I wear three hats, right? In my day job, I, I work in dispatch and logistics. So that's constantly eight-plus hours a day of problem solving and running scenarios and figuring out what's going to work best to get to the solution. So that's constantly eight-plus hours a day of problem solving and running scenarios and figuring out what's going to work best to get to the solution. And realizing that decisions now may have an impact tomorrow, may have impacts down the road. So I think that's an important skill in government. It's problem solving. I'm a small business owner. I promote live events. That is the ability to engage and bring people together, right? I'm also a stand-up comedian. That's the ability to communicate effectively and read the room and figure out how people are feeling. I think all three of those skills lend themselves well to a community board or council.
Okay. Explain what you believe are the primary roles and responsibilities of a city council member.
Yeah, I think it's, it's imperative and the main, main function here before anything else is to protect and maintain city services and the quality of life for city, to the city residents and the city staff. I also think, and I've talked to several of you individually about this at different times, but long-term planning. It's obvious with one drive through the city that that has not been a priority forever. And we see that with Duel and Five, what happened? It, it would have been a lot easier probably to change on a piece of paper when we were plotting things out years ago than this mess that we have right now, so. Just, you know, we got to figure out our long-term planning and really keep that in mind. Ask the what-ifs. I'm big on that. What if? What does it look like if this happens or that happens? And I also think it's important to grow amenities, to maintain amenities. You got to do that responsibly, but you got to do that by adding amenities that add value to the community. And when you can do that for minimal investment, like a archery range or another dog park or community gardens, that is pretty beneficial, I think. That's a good thing.
Okay. And what do you believe are the top priorities or greatest issues facing the city? And how do you see yourself contributing to finding solutions to those issues?
Yeah, particularly over the last year, we've watched this council kind of struggle with, you know, to come to terms with this. It's finding a good balance between being an affordable place to live and a nice place to live. I think that's the biggest thing. I think there's a middle ground, but nice isn't always affordable and affordable always isn't always nice. So I think that we need to find what that looks like to be an affordable, nice place to live, and I think there's opportunity for that. Again, future planning and asking the what-ifs. What does it look like? Obviously, we want to maximize our tax base, but we have to plan for it responsibly.
If you could change some aspect about Isanty governance or direction or focus, what would that be?
Yeah, I think the ability for community engagement in city government, obviously, you know, we're broadcasting and, and the meetings are being put on YouTube, and I think that that's fantastic. And one councilor in particular is really good about responding to comments on there and just explaining where the city's at. We've made great strides, but I think there's work to be done. I, I'd like to see recaps and previews of upcoming city issues that we know are coming down that, in the Isantyan. That's a, that's a publication that we have at our disposal. If there's a plow truck in the budget, what's the protective, projected cost? How does everybody feel about that? They're not the experts, they're not the elected officials, but it's a lot easier for everybody to make a decision when 6,000 people are like, "Yeah, we should get a plow truck so it doesn't break down," or "No, let's save the money," you know what I mean? So I, I think, that was obviously just an example, but to have that perspective from people other than every four years when you're knocking doors and trying to campaign.
City Council requires a time commitment, which includes four to six meetings per month, two Tuesdays per month. We start one Tuesday at 5:00 PM and we start one at 7:00, as well as a lot of reading and prep time prior to meetings. Will this fit with your other commitments?
Yes.
And is there anything else you would like to add to assist us in considering you as a candidate?
Yeah, as, as all of you are well aware, I ran for this very seat in 2022. I wasn't, it wasn't the most aggressive campaign, but I lost to former council, councilman Collison by just seven votes. There's more people than that in this room, seven votes. Nobody else here, good candidates, but nobody else here had 800 votes for City Council, Isanty City Council. I did. I'm also the only candidate that is a member of the City of Isanty Board currently. Also, I have stake in the game. I'm a homeowner here. I'm in my 30s. My wife and I are planning to start a family. And I plan to be here for a while, which is probably good if you've seen interest rates. So, yeah, that's where I'm at with that.
What makes a business want to locate to Isanty?
I got excited when I heard this question, George, and I'll tell you why. In my day job, part of it is, is business development and looking at new communities to where we're going to set up future operations. Obviously, you know, good tax rates, things like that are natural. But one thing that I don't think people realize about Isanty is the accessibility. And what I mean by that is, two main corridors through the state cross right in our backyard, right? We also have BNSF, which is a terribly underutilized utility in the city of Isanty. I think it's even underutilized in Cambridge for as long as that corridor is, but in Isanty, BNSF, we're less than 60 minutes away from interstate in literally every single direction. North, south, east, west, anywhere you want to go, you can be there in less than 60 minutes around the interstate, from coast to coast, north to south. That's, uh, there's communities out west that would kill for that kind of accessibility. Yeah, good population base here to draw from a diverse workforce. You're going to have the blue-collar workers that typically come from rural spaces and you're going to have the executive, white-collar workers that are going to come from the more, you know, suburban spaces and city spaces. So I think that's, our location is something that, off the top of my head, I really don't think another community can compete with. So that's what I would say would be the biggest attractor to Isanty for business.
And you had answered my question about three years living here.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thanks, Daniel. All right, so that was our last candidate here. And so I think we'll, I don't know if we want to have any discussion at all or, or anything like that. First of all, I want to thank everyone that applied. Yeah, I mean, it's, it takes some guts to even just get up here and, and do this and, and come before the council and have everybody staring at you and all that kind of stuff. And so it's, I appreciate you guys taking the time and, and doing that. You know, and it's, it's tough to narrow it down when you have this many candidates and, and every single one of you, I think, would bring something to the table that's unique and beneficial and would be a positive part of, of what we're trying to do. So I, the worst part about a meeting like this is that you're going to disappoint seven people, you know. So no matter what we do, seven people are going to walk out here mad at us.
Yeah, and I just wanted to say.
Hopefully not mad at us, we, but.
I want to say I'm very impressed with everybody that was here. I'm, I'm happy that there's this many people in the community that want to get involved. Makes our decision very difficult. I would be happy with any of you on here. So I think it's, it's awesome to see people in the community wanting to get involved, especially some younger folks, so, thank you.
Yeah, and I would encourage all of you, you know, if you're not, you know, if you're looking for, for something else to do. I mean, at some point, I'm sure we'll have some more openings coming up on our EDA Board or, or Park Board or Planning Commission. I mean, just keep an eye out for that. And if you don't get it tonight, you know, we still, we'll hopefully have opportunities for you in the future, so.
There's, there's not a candidate that came up here tonight that I wouldn't be excited to see on any committee that we have open. That'd be great.
Absolutely. Well, I did this last time and I think I'm going to do it again this time, that we had to fill a vacant city council seat. And that was making endorsement. You know, we've got eight candidates and that's, that's tough to find consensus sometime and I don't want to have us voting, you know, 1-1-1-1 or something like that, so. So in the interest of, of trying to build that consensus, I'm going to cast my vote tonight for Jeff Holmgren. I've gotten to know Jeff over the last several years. He's a passionate guy. You know, he's, he's big into limiting the size of government, which I think is, is important. I know that he'll do his research and I know that he'll take the job seriously. I've seen it from him in, in other areas. I know he'll ask a lot of great questions and I know he'll have some outside-the-box ideas that we've, you know, would be similar to what we've been trying to accomplish the last 10 months. And I, I just really think that he would be a great fit for, for this council and, and the goals that we have. That's not to say that anybody else wouldn't be also a good fit, but, but I know Jeff and I, and I know where he stands on things and I, I would like to, to at least endorse him and, and let you guys know where I stand on that and, and. So, yeah, that's, that's kind of where I'm going to be at.
I want to say it again, and I stated this in the last seat you filled. I think Daniel Henen Camp had shown a lot of interest. Like I said, he beat Mr. Collison by eight votes, seven, eight votes.
Well, he lost to him.
Yeah, I mean, he lost to him by seven, eight votes, but he, he had ran for this seat. And I, and I honestly feel in my heart believing that is the person that deserves to be put in that position. Not that, you know, I appreciate every one of you that came up here. Yes, you all have valid points. It, it takes a lot to do this. I've been doing it for many years. I also want to state to you, Ms. Lundin does not have any relation to me. It's the first time I've ever seen that name. I have no relation in the city, so. But I just feel that, you know, Dan has put that effort in for that election. And I felt even at the last time, it should have been rightfully his, for that reason, reason alone. Because the people did vote for him at that point. And that's, you know, that's what I would want to endorse, just for that simple reason.
I'm also going to go out on a limb and endorse Dan for that as well. I think it's great that he's involved with the Facebook stuff. After every meeting, he seems to message me and we talk about things and it's great to see that somebody's involved. He's been trying to get in the seat. I think he'd be a good, a good, just a good input or addition to what we have here. He brings different opinions and viewpoints to the stage, so it's, I think Dan's a great candidate for it.
I'll vote when I vote.
Mayor and council at this time, if there, if there's further discussion, please do hold that. Otherwise, Miss Strand is going to come around with a ballot sheet.
Okay.
And the council mayor, you can cast your vote and then she will come collect it. And then she will read the votes.
I still want to say thank you to all of you. It's, it takes a lot to do what you, to even want to come up here. And we do apologize ahead of time. Like the mayor said, there's going to be seven people that feel upset. Please don't. It's not an easy decision, so, by any means.
And I would encourage all of you to just stay involved. I mean, we could have another seat open up. You could run next time. There's all sorts of options and I think it's great to get involved in any capacity.
Yeah, absolutely.
We have one vote for Jeff Holmgren. One vote for Daniel Henen Camp. One vote for Daniel Henen Camp. And one vote for Jeff Holmgren. Mayor and council, we do have a tie between two of those, the two candidates. The mayor is permitted to, by state statute, to break a tie and appoint a candidate.
I'll go ahead and break that tie and I'll appoint Jeff Holmgren.
Thank you to all of our candidates again. We do have the oath of office for Mr. Holmgren to take seat this evening. And if you want to go up to the podium, Jaden will meet you there and give you the oath of office. Yes. Raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Jeff Holmgren.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To support the Constitution.
To support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the state of Minnesota.
Of the state of Minnesota.
And to discharge faithfully.
And to discharge faithfully.
The duties of council member.
The duties of council member.
Of the city of Isanty.
Of the city of Isanty.
Minnesota.
Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment.
To the best of my judgment.
And ability.
And ability.
So help me God.
Help me God.
Congratulations.
Well, welcome, Jeff. To turn that microphone on, you just push that button there in front of you and, and just try to speak kind of pretty direct into it, I think, right?
Yep.
Can you hear me now?
Yep, I think so. Can you hear him? All right. So I think our next order of business then is to replace Dan's committee assignments, right?
Correct. Mayor and council, you can replace Dan Collison with Jeff Holmgren. Or you can have discussion on rearranging the seats now that this resolution is open for the committee appointments. That is up to your discretion.
I personally just have him replace Dan's commitments and I think that's what we stood on even when Dan was in office.
Yeah, he doesn't have much. He's just got the Runriver BMX Association Board.
Councilmember Holmgren, if you want to turn in your packet, there's a packet right in front of you on page 103. And 102 is what they're discussing.
Do you have anything in particular that you're potentially interested in, sorry, committees or things that you're really into?
I, I, I'm okay with the BMX.
Okay.
I don't know about anything else. I'm, I'm open, so.
I think we should keep it, just have him take Dan's spot and if there's anything that pops up that he wants, then we could change it later.
I'm good with that.
Reappointments will be up in January again, so if there is something that needs to be added or changed, we can make it at that time if that's, sounds good.
Okay. All right. Do we need a, you need a motion for that or, okay?
I motion to leave committees as we're just replacing him with, in Dan's position.
I'll second that.
I have a motion from Councilman Lundin and a second from Councilman Merrill. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries 5-0. Moving on to K2, the memorandum of understanding between the City of Isanty and the IUOE Local 49.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So I've worked with, oh, excuse me, Mayor and Council, we do need a, a vote to appoint Jeff Holmgren as a council member.
Well, that wasn't what we did when we, when I had to break the tie.
We need a, a motion, a second and a vote.
Okay, gotcha. And, and Jeff will vote in this now or no? Okay, so he'll, he'll sit this one out?
I apologize, this was, should have happened before the appointments resolution.
Okay. So I'd look for a motion then to appoint Jeff Holmgren to the vacant city council seat. Okay.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Aye, or I'm abstaining.
Yeah.
Abstaining.
Abstain, just abstain before it passes anyway, so.
Yeah, I mean, wouldn't, wouldn't that vote have been, if I'm breaking the tie on that vote, wouldn't that be the vote to, to pass that?
It'll be a 2-2 vote and then you would break that. You would be able to appoint.
Oh, even in this situation here?
Correct.
Okay, I got you. So did you want to vote or you want to, I don't think you can abstain, actually, can you?
If there's not a conflict of interest, you should not abstain.
Okay, then I'll make it. It's just.
Okay, and then I'll vote.
No offense, you should be sitting over there.
Then I'll vote to break the tie on this.
Yes.
Okay. All right, anything else on K1? Okay.
Sorry about that.
That's all right. So, back to K2 then, the memorandum of understanding between the City of Isanty and IUOE Local 49.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So we do, I have worked with the Local 49, which is a union of the public works facility, to draft up this agreement between the city and the union members to be able to have fill-in employees on a temporary basis when we have employees out. So how this came to be is we've had one employee who's been on workman's compensation for an injury for quite some time. Likely won't return until way after the new year, potentially even longer. It's undecided at this time. And we had another member who is out intermittently for worker's compensation for injury as well. It puts the city in a very tough predicament to be able to go into winter season and how, have all of our services be provided as they would be if we were full-staffed. So I'm very happy that the union and the members were willing to work with the city and allow for us to use our seasonal employee, other employees to fill in if we have more than two people gone in public works. So they can step in and do plowing. other employees to fill in if we have more than two people gone in public works, so they can step in and do plowing and other services such as that. This is only for the timeframe between November 1st and May 1st, so it really is hitting that, the winter season.
All right.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilman Lundeen and a second from Councilman Merrill. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries 5-0. Moving on to K3, the resolution to consider awarding bid for the Bluebird Park restroom project.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Bids were opened on Friday, October 27th, for the construction of the Bluebird Park restroom project. In total, five bids were received. Versacon Incorporated was the lowest bidder at $188,500, and staff are recommending to award the bid to Versacon.
So I had a question on this. Why was there such a huge difference in the price? I mean, you're talking $120,000 difference, and why is it so expensive if we're, I don't, I don't get how it's $188,500 to put up a small building?
Versacon did double-check their numbers because of the discrepancy to make sure that there was nothing missed, and it is the price that they are standing by, and does meet all of our requirements within the bid. This happens oftentimes when it's this time of year. Depends on people's busyness, construction costs, what they're getting supplies at. So it's not something we, we, we see it quite a bit in construction projects like this, especially on the smaller scale. The, the big verse, diversity in costs. For this small project, this is what it's coming in now with, with the cost.
Okay, I know Steve had talked about potentially helping with the plumbing. Are you still doing that with this price?
Yep. That includes that we had taken the plumbing out of this bid.
I guess, what did we budget for with the plumbing? I mean, it's, this is, these bids aren't, aren't reasonable for that small of a shed. It's not. I've been against this since day one, and I think this is still, it probably at least $60,000 over what it should be for Steve doing the plumbing. There's nothing to it.
Plumbing wouldn't be $60,000.
No, right, I know.
But I will tell you this. You've still got to meet requirements for building structure and safety.
Right.
Still frost footings. It can't be a floating slab. Their, and costs of materials have been going up and up and up. Most contractors will not guarantee a bid for over 30 days.
Yep, I know.
It's, it's, trust me, I see it every day, and it's retarded. I shouldn't use that, excuse me, ridiculous. I've used the wrong, pardon for the wrong term there, but it's ridiculous that, that is what happens.
What is the number that we originally discussed, the low-end number that this may happen at?
This still was within our budget as budgeted previously, so the kit price came in at $175,000. Our goal was to try to get it lower with pushing out the bids a few months. This is what we have come in at now, and prices just continue to increase.
Next spring, it's going to be $40,000, $50,000 more.
I, I guess I don't think the community sees $200,000 of value in that bathroom.
I think it's a-
Then that would require us to return the grant-
Yep.
-for the splash park that we had received, which is $300,000 from the DNR, and not move forward with the splash park project.
And I think you have to remember, I mean, I, so what did we have budgeted for it? Was the $175?
It's within our budget. Engineering and finance both double-checked that it would still be within our budget.
I agree with you. Look, it is-
But that's what Steve's generous contribution too, so I mean, to say it's within budget, I mean, if you took out Steve's stuff, we wouldn't be within budget.
You don't think we're going to get any better bids by going out again or waiting or anything like that?
Nope, it's going to get worse.
I, I guess I don't, I disagree.
It's going to get worse.
That's a very small building for almost $200,000, even with frost footings. I just, I don't see it.
And so, I mean, this is being covered with park dedication funds, which-
Correct.
-which we now know we can use for other park maintenance and that type of thing, right?
Not maintenance, improvements.
Improvements, so I mean, we can take out an old piece of equipment, and we can replace a new piece of equipment and all that kind of stuff, which we, we didn't know before, but.
So I had a question. How many gallons of water is this splash pad going to go through every day?
40,000 was what we were told, 40,000.
Every day?
Every day.
That's not very conservative, in my opinion, and I would not be going through with this project. I have kids. I have an eight-year-old, and I talk to a lot of parents who have kids around that age who would use this, and they are not on board with this.
I think it's too hard on our water infrastructure.
Absolutely. It's just wasteful, in my opinion, and I wouldn't be building it. And how much does it cost for the restrooms? Bathrooms. We're talking about bathrooms. We're conservatives in this area.
I'm on board with what you're saying 100%. What brought me around a little bit to this, because I was laid on board for this whole process, because I would have asked a lot more questions, but the funds have already been, we had a grant from the DNR. We're using park and rec funds that we can't use for anything else.
Well, I mean, I will say-
What's going to get us a lot of our budget will probably be maintenance in the future.
Yeah.
But can we use the park and rec funds for that? For maintenance in the future on a splash pad, can them fund?
No, you would not be able to, Councilmember.
But if a feature broke down, you could replace it with that now, now that we know that, that. So, yes, I mean, for those of you that are in the audience and don't know or are watching on Facebook or YouTube, but for years, we thought you have to use park dedication funds on brand-new park amenities, so-